At this time, it is my distinct pleasure to call your May 2023 order, or excuse me, Hannover Borough Council meeting's order. I request that we stand and recite our Pledge of Allegiance in unison, and we'll follow that with a brief moment of silence. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, shall we call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Spunk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Mr. Ricart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Ropp?
Here.
Solicitor Schultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Kress.
And Tim Kress.
Would you retire? Okay, I believe the mayor would like to give community recognition. Mayor Whitman?
It's my pleasure tonight to give a community recognition to Mr. Jeff Stern, who is the owner of JS Construction. But before I do that, would you just get a little description of what it was exactly you did before the theater?
Okay. As you all know, the theater across the street is getting a little rundown, and for them to get insurance, it needed some minor repairs done inside and out so that they could get insurance on the building.
Okay, so if you would mind, I'm going to read it. So JS Construction. Whereas Mr. Jeff Stern is the owner of JS Construction, a local custom home builder operating in the Hannover area for the last 20 years. Whereas the Hannover Economic Development Corporation, a local nonprofit organization and owner of the Hannover State Theater, is collaborating with the borough of Hannover to revitalize this property. Whereas Mr. Stern felt compelled to take a direct initiative to provide a positive benefit back to his community. And whereas the Hannover State Theater needed a variety of repair and replacement measures in order to ensure the structural integrity of this historical property. And whereas Mr. Stern and coworkers at JS Construction generously donated their time and talents to quickly and efficiently make several significant and necessary repairs to the theater at no cost to the taxpayers or the AGDC. Now therefore, I see Ann Whitman, mayor of the borough of Hannover, York County, Pennsylvania, ask all Hannover area citizens to recognize and commend JS Construction for their generous donation for the betterment of the borough of Hannover and its citizens to help protect this valuable landmark structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Whitman. I'm going to come front and center, which doesn't happen very often. Council would like to give an award tonight, and the recipient is not here, but I believe his father is. Eugene? Here he is. Chris, I know you're with us, so you're getting the award. And Eugene knows about this, the rest of us know about this, but now you're finding out.
I'm finding out.
You there, Chris?
I'm finding out. I'm here.
Okay, so whereas Chris joined the ED Fire Company in August of 1983 and was very active in the company throughout the years, taking a special interest in the administrative side of operations, including the Volunteer Relief Association. And whereas when Hannover Borough and Penn Township formed the Hannover Area Fire and Rescue Commission in December of 2016, Chris served on the commission from the very beginning as a Borough Council Representative, and also helped offices under the Hannover Area Fire and Rescue Division. And, it's long, Chris. And whereas in January 2018, Chris was elected to serve as the 5th Ward Hannover Borough Councilperson, where he continues to serve to this day, always taking pride in his community and civic duty. And whereas Chris led the fight to obtain the Old Eagle Fire Station for use as the Greater Hannover Area Fire Museum, with the official grant opening held in September of 2018, and held the positions of president, president, and secretary at various times throughout the years. And whereas Chris took it upon himself to purchase all of the paint for the inside of the museum, dedicated many hours to the painting and the organization of displays, and was highly honored when the parlor of the fire museum was recently named after him by his peers. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Sue Ann Whitman and Hannover Borough Council, Hannover, York County, Pennsylvania, we'd like to present the certificate of community recognition to Christopher E. Lockard, and thank him on behalf of the Hannover Borough Council for his many years of continuing service and dedication to the borough of Hannover and his beloved fire department. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, everyone. Truly been an honor to serve you. Did I lose you?
We got you.
Okay. I just heard silence.
Good times.
At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone with something constructive to say before council? We ask that you come forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to recognize you for, you're bringing something very important to council, aren't you?
Good evening, Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Bob Hollingshead, I'm the general manager of the Hannover Eagles, along with Ralph Loughlin, a trustee for the Hannover Eagles. Over the past years, we've done quite a few charity events for the donations to the Hannover Borough. We bought the Santa Cabin that we paid $47,000 for, we bought that for the Hannover Borough. We've given the fire, the police department $2,500 this year. We just donated $4,000 to the J.C.'s for the pageant and Halloween parade this year. So tonight, I'm here to give a little check, not much, for the, this year's fireworks in the amount of $13,500 to the Hannover Borough for the fireworks.
Women are used to giving the checks. Thank you. Any other public comment? I see I have a form for Audrey. Audrey, you're a regular, so come on down.
Good evening, and thank you for presenting an award to Chris Lockard for his dedication to the community. First of all, my name is Audrey Coppersmith. For those that don't know me, I live at 412 Osage Drive in the Cherry Tree 4 community. I am very concerned about my community, as well as the Cherry Tree 5 proposed. I guess it's, according to the zoning minutes that just recently dropped, it's a 126-plus apartment/townhome community now, which concerned me that the notes were, you know, not available to us until they got approved at the meeting, so we attended that meeting and found out that in fact, last Wednesday, these minutes dropped, and that is a very concern to us, that it's 126-plus now apartment/townhome, unless there's an error of some sort in the minutes that I'm reading, but those were the ones that were presented on the council thing. So obviously, I've had some concerns along the way with stormwater management, traffic. There are some things just out of the minutes that, including someone who used to serve on the zoning commission, one of the comments that she stated, I just want to share with you, just to, as a result. It was Merle Federer, from the zoning board member, she said on, as she was leaving, Ms. Federer stated she feels the approval of the special exception will have an adverse effect on the school district with a large increase of the numbers of students in the public school system, which will be a burden on all citizens. As of June 2022, Ms. Federer stated the cost is just under $20,000 per student per year. She also feels it will have an adverse effect on public safety issues, which are some of the issues that our community is trying to address as well, if it in fact gets built behind our community. As you're aware from, I guess, the last meeting that I testified, we unfortunately had at least one sinkhole that has potentially developed, or they're trying to mitigate it at this point. Unfortunately, the community has not been kept well informed. Some property has been marked off, they've been told they're going to get censors. Some of the ladies that were trying to be here this evening, they had some medical appointments for their aging relatives, so I'm not sure if they were able to attend.
Audrey, just to let you know, you have about a minute left.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, in any case, their concern is, is when they tried to get information, they were told that they were just old ladies complaining about frivolous topics, and so they are very concerned about sinkholes, and also were concerned because today, when they were digging in the pond behind our home, they actually were packed down the ground about another potential sinkhole that I notified code enforcement, as well as the property company of. It has now been packed down with dirt, and we now have water in the middle of the pond where they're constructing that wasn't there before. In fact, our landing was actually shaking today on the top of the hill above the wall when we were standing on it while they were digging down below. So it's not just an issue for our whole community as a whole, but if this is the kind of work that's going on in Cherry Tree 4, we have real huge concerns, and we would implore the board, or the council, to oppose Cherry Tree 5, and also try and help us get the matters mitigated in our community, which is a 55-plus community. I'd also like to invite those that are here tonight in response to Cherry Tree 4, as well as in potential opposition to Cherry Tree 5, to please stand at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't have any other forms for public comment?
I'm sorry, I came in late.
You get two minutes for no form, how's that sound? Can you do it in two?
I lost 10.
Yeah, that's right after the meeting ends, so you'll get 10.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Tammy Gobrek, I live on Ash Drive, adjacent to the new Cherry Tree 5 development. And I really, I have a question this evening. Somehow, if the contesting of the zoning doesn't go through, and it gets to planning, and planning approves it, is my understanding correct that you guys as a board then have to approve it or not approve it? I mean, is that correct?
I'll let the solicitor answer the question.
So if the land development subdivision plan is before the planning commission, it will ultimately come to council for approval or disapproval.
Okay. Second question, has the council ever disapproved of something that has gotten that far?
I have no knowledge, either yes or no.
Yeah, I can't imagine the answer is no, in the history of the borough.
Okay.
So.
Okay. That's really all the comment I had. We did have a hearing yesterday, just to kind of update everyone. For the zoning meeting, Mr. Myers had said that the suit, or the contesting of the zoning was frivolous, and took us to court yesterday, and had asked for a bond. That was lowered, but we still questioned that, and the judge will rule on that shortly. So I guess, because you were on that, you will know when we know, is that correct?
We will know when everyone else knows.
Yeah, okay, okay, great. I just want to keep you informed of that. So, you know, we still have problems with that Cherry Tree 5 development, and I think you know what our concerns are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I hold it to two minutes this time?
It did. Extra credit.
He had like four seconds left.
Anyone else in the room? Seeing none, I'll ask Community Media to open us up to electronic methods. If you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and move into item eight, oh, excuse me, seven, we have a presentation. Parks and Rec, I think they're front and center. Tool and Mears.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for having us. We saw your quite full agenda tonight, so we brought with us briefing booklets, but we'd mostly like to hear questions from you, any concerns you might have, ideas you might have. We could take you through this quickly if you'd like, but we're most interested in responding to anything that you need from us. Oh, and by the way, I'm Ann Tool, and this is Andy Mears. You've met us before. Before we leap in, I would just like to say, we've done extensive community engagement, we've gotten over 600 survey responses from the public. We've done interviews, focus groups, we have an awesome advisory committee, some of them are here for moral support, and AJ over there has been our leader, and we're grateful that Margie's here now, too. So what you see in this booklet is our interpretation of what the community is interested in having, and the great opportunities that we see available in your borough. It just is, it's just a gem of a community. So this plan is designed to take advantage of that. So we would like to know, do you want to comment, ask a question, you want us to go through? Okay, all right. We will start with this. Some of the pages, we can just, they're for information purposes. So what we heard from the public, public engagement on this page, is we've heard, improve our neighborhood parks, connect our community with safe places to walk and bike, have more fun and cool things to do, your town square area has tremendous potential for that, so we are interested in beautifying that area and making it a destination. We have, all of this is designed to make Hannover have a very strong sense of place. When you're here in Hannover, you know it's Hannover. So what we have in Hannover, you want to take that, what we have in Hannover?
Yeah, so one of the surprising things that we noticed right away was, even though you have 12 parks, that total, you know, 50 acres, 65% of that is really out of your control, meaning that there are school properties or other properties owned by others, so that's something we wanted to point out.
What is, just as a side, what is the total acreage of the borough? Just so we know what it is.
About 3,200 acres.
3,200 acres?
That's right, 3,200 acres.
3,250, something like that.
Thank you.
Because you own 2,500 outside.
Yeah, that's what we have within the borough, and there's 2,500 outside of there.
Yeah, so that 2,500 outside is Shepherd Myers and the reservoir, so those are also very important, even though they're outside, not just your water resources, but they present a lot of opportunity. So one of the things that we're going to be looking at is, you know, you're looking at the connections from the north to Mountfield and the rail trail, but what's the potential to the south? So we actually, with the advisory committee, presented some recommendations on that, and we'll be getting to those later, not in this, but it's something that we wanted to present. There's a lot going on here. I mean, this little flower here, if you want to call it that, I mean, look at that. There's a lot of things, and there's a lot of potential here, because there's a lot of overlap between these. For example, railroad coming into, from the library to the downtown area, we talked about this tonight. That's a tremendous street that's overlooked, and could be the main thoroughfare that connects not just to the library and the downtown, but to your new building, potentially, and then beyond to Mountfield. So right now, there's industry on one side, there's the forgotten marker there, so there's some real potential there, and it really deserves some love, and to be heightened, and could be, and you have a streetscape plan, we want to make sure that streetscape plan is thinking about what we see as the potential for that street, but also in terms of, but in terms of green stormwater infrastructure, and everything else that is going on here. That project could be tying all of this together, and should be looking at all those studies. So that's one of the things we want to make sure we point out.
So our vision is based upon, this whole plan is based upon our vision, and five big moves, that's it. We're not giving you a laundry list, although there will be many tasks to do, but it's a strategy with five big moves. And our vision for Hannover, and we think you're close, is Hannover will be one of the coolest little towns in Pennsylvania. Our parks, trails, conservation lands, and plentiful recreation opportunities will attract and retain residents and businesses, serving to advance a thriving local economy and enviable quality of life. We view parks and recreation not as a cost, but an investment. For every dollar that a municipality spends on public parks and recreation, at least another $1.42 is generated in the local economy. So that's why it's an investment. Our first big move recommendation is to establish a parks and recreation department. One of the wonderful things about your borough that we've come to really appreciate is the passionate, expert staff that works as a team here. And Margie, AJ, Eric, they've all been pulling, pulling a parks and recreation department together, but it's not their job. And this is all that a parks and recreation department has to do. There's no way humanly possible that Eric, AJ, and Margie can do these. Plus, the other, one of the important aspects here is that a good parks and recreation director will generate revenues, partnerships, sponsorships, grants, gifts, donations, and lots of different kinds of programming. So the second big move.
Is really to focus on improving your neighborhood parks. We heard from the advisory committee, we heard from the public, that really fixing up the neighborhood park is really critical. So we're going to be making recommendations on that. You see Work Park here, and some of the recommendations we've shown on how to address that park, including refreshing it, but also recognizing the Ten Commandments monument that's there, parking, the new playground that's going to be installed this summer. How can this all work together? Also, looking at some stormwater management features, some rain gardens and things like that, to tie into the infrastructure in the street. So we'll be making similar recommendations to the other parks. You can see on the next page, the Arbor Eden Park, you know, that's kind of a hidden gem. It's got some very mature trees there, it's not really utilized, it's underutilized, not that far from the downtown core, but programming of that park could really give some new life and breathe some vitality into it, and let people know that it's a park. So we'll be making some recommendations on that as well.
Go ahead, you can still go on.
Still me. Big move number three, optimize the square, and really tie. Other plans have, you know, recommended the Green Alley, we think that's a wonderful concept, and really could work and tie everything together. But the square really needs to be a place. It's not a place right now, not for pedestrians, certainly. There's things that happen there, but it could be a lot more. So we want to look at that in terms of place-making, and utilizing the alleys for the pedestrian connections. And as I talked about earlier, using railroad to street to really connect that, and allow you to walk the entire way to the trail. If you flip to the next, and this is one of my favorite streets, I just love this street, it's got so much character. I mean, the water tower going across, but you can see the before picture on the left, we're simply saying, you really don't have to do a lot, because the restaurants are around the corner, everything is there. Some movable seating here, some signage, if you want to go as far as some pavement, only do that when you're addressing the stormwater issues. You can see drainage down the middle, these are just some concepts, but if you can tie that into some of your other initiatives, you can renovate this, and tie that whole square, walking through the alleys together. But you can just see the transformation, that just a few basic improvements. We're not spending a lot of money here saying redo this whole thing, we're saying, improve that with your already infrastructure improvements, and then add some programming to tie to the already successful economic things you're having, that are so successful in the downtown already.
Okay, conserve our precious conservation lands. Our 2,500 acres that we own outside of the borough, Andy could talk about the connection to that, but you own almost as much in conservation lands close to home as your whole borough size. Want to talk about that?
Yeah, and, you know, you've already studied the connection going north to Mount, I talked about it before, but what about going south? These right now are forgotten, I know there's some other initiatives about what these could be, how can they be, whether it's ecotourism, or whatever the uses are. The point is, they're important, and you should have a steward management plan, because it is your water source, they're natural areas, so that needs to be done. We're recommending high-level planning, as far as master planning, be done for those to see what the potential is. But we already know what the potential is, people are using it, and needs to be connected. It's 4.2 miles from the square to the first park, so.
Is that by?
Four miles as far as the bur- yes.
As, or as?
That is MapQuest from the square, right to the first parking lot at, not Shepherd Myers.
Longarm.
Longarm.
To Longarm.
So 4.2 miles, exactly.
We're blessed to have all that.
You're blessed to have that, and you don't need a, you know, a railroad corridor or other things.
A high-speed rail thing?
Well, I'm saying to investigate connections. We've worked in the borough, or South Middleton Township, one of the interesting things they did there is work with all of their adjacent ag lands and preserved easements, and were able to connect to their large land holdings, parks by easements through farmland. Now, when you look at the parcels, obviously, the Adams County, York County line goes right through there, but it's pretty evident, when you look across that line, there is some big land holdings there. So even if you got across a little bit to get there and work with a number of owners, the potential is there to establish that connection by working it out.
Fortunately, that our forefathers, or whatever, had the foresight, whatever four words you want to use, to have taken all that land and put it together, and, you know, left it for us. I mean, it's remarkable that we have that, and that's the challenge, is what do we do with it as an asset, and how do we best utilize it?
Well, it's already getting utilized now for recreation, so it's logical to make that connection for your community, but what else could it be? That's, what else could it be, I think is the long-term solution? I think the short-term solution is, let's figure out how to get there.
Absolutely. So what you have as a borough is the magic formula for the United States in year 2023 of a walkable, friendly, safe community with access to the great outdoors on a short bike ride. That's the formula. I don't know anybody else that has that formula. So you're saying you want to connect downtown with the, with the reservoirs? Yes, via a four-mile bike ride.
100%.
Four-mile bike ride, that's it. You would have business, it's, I can't even overstate how valuable that formula is in attracting, keeping businesses. Okay, so Trail Town, you want to do Trail Town?
You're already, I mean, your studies have already said you're Trail Town. You're already training your people, Main Street's doing a good job, so you're already there. I mean, that's a given, to establish this as a Trail Town. But the other thing, that that connection, again, everything should be working towards this, and that connection down to the reservoir and that 2,500 acres really adds to that, and what happens there can really support this whole Trail Town's initiative.
Yeah. So in bringing it all together, one of the things that we were working on in our committee meeting is, when Andy and I leave, what happens? We want, we have a lot of momentum going, so we're doing a jumpstart plan of what you do in your first year to keep it going. And so we have a strategy started here, that we believe that you should have a formal Parks and Recreation- a formal Parks and Recreation Department with a professional, certified Parks and Recreation Professional as the Director, and that you have some conversations with Main Street to see how maybe there could be a collaboration with the goal of ultimately establishing a conservancy. A conservancy would be like a friends group that raises money and provides support. We think that's very doable here. So, in the first year, it's setting that department up. We're working on some policies that, such as naming policies, fundraising, grants, gifts, donation policies. All that needs to be set up. In the first year, you of course adopt the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan, which you will be seeing soon, and you'll get to get your red cursor out and tell us where you'd like some changes, which will revise prior to adoption. We think that you need a financing plan. We are recommending what Andy just said. Figure out, start talking with the parcel owners to connect those. It's a conversation. And establishing an, an annual work program, which would, you will see next what, what that would be. Now, in putting all this together, I'm sure as elected officials, your mind is, oh, yeah, right, how are we going to pay for all this? So, we're start, we're recommending, starting small. We're recommending seeing this as, as an investment, not a cost. And this is the golden age of funding for parks and recreation. One of the things, as just an example of the funding that's available at the state and federal level right now, just a month ago, a $1.5 billion forestry program was announced. It includes provision for GOMAT grant for distressed communities. Your community is classified, as you know, as distressed, and one of the factors that makes you distressed is that you don't have enough open space. That's what makes you distressed. So, the forestry grant could.
And that's within the, the basic contiguous borough itself.
Right. So, the, in that, like this forestry grant, the minimum grants 100,000 GOMAT, the maximum's 50 million. So, there's a whole range, but you don't have enough staff to, to do this. I don't know how your staff does everything that it does. So, that's why we're recommending the establishment of a formal Parks and Recreation Department and then to undertake some of the neighborhood park improvements and including policies like naming. How are we going to name some of our parks or change names in parks? So, we're, we're recommending the department to look at a mix of public and private revenue sources. It's not, you can't do it on your own. Positioning to tap the money that's available at the state and federal levels, partnering with organizations like Main Street, partnering, starting a conservancy, things like that so that you, you have, you're getting by with a lot of help from your friends. It's, you're not doing this on your own. We would never make recommendations that you would have to do this on your own. We, any good department gets their revenues from a mix of public and private sources. So, there we go. Yes?
Would any of these plans cut through on pro, like private properties or no?
All of the plans, the improvements to the parks will be in the park property.
So, you will expand onto private properties?
No, no.
We, on the, the connect, some of the bike paths could be connected through partnerships with private land, willing private landowners, willing private landowners. That's how trails are built.
And that's a good question because the, the individual parks already have their boundaries defined, so we're working within those. But, if there's an opportunity, like we talked about getting down to the 2,500 acres, if there's opportunities there, we want to highlight that. Obviously, we don't want to show where things may go because we don't know who is going to be a willing partner, participants. We just want to acknowledge that we need to get here and try and set the stage for those conversations to happen so that people can talk and maybe establish the route. So, the route may go, or it may go.
The, the other really important part of your question, though, is that your parks are on land that you don't own. That Mau Field is owned by the school district.
Repeat what you just said, please.
You, you have parks on land that you don't own. That the Mau Field is owned by the school district.
Half of it.
The Ballfields.
Yeah. There, yeah, their Ballfield, one of the parks is owned half by a private entity, the other half. And that also comes into play for funding because sometimes the funding agencies want to make sure that you own all of the park or the park, parts of the park where the improvements are going to be made. So, there are some, some issues with that.
Partnerships with the school district, though, would be something that we could write into a grant.
Yes.
Yes, you would need a 25, you know, 25-year.
Considering Mau Field.
For Mau, yes.
Do you focus on the historical background of the town?
I don't see that as an idea.
How it was involved within the Civil War itself and the homes that have been built in the 1817 hundreds? Do you focus on any of that?
Yes.
The history?
Yep. The history is very important here. And unfortunately, in the parks, and I'm to blame as much as everybody else because every time I talk about this park, I forget the name. Is it Fourth Street and?
A.J.
Hannover.
Hannover Street.
I always forget about this park, and it's got such a, a history. I heard everybody talk about it, and the history doesn't make any sense to me. I had to go watch a YouTube video by these, the teacher from the high school and, and learn why the significance of it up. It's an amazing story once you hear it. So, that's one of the parks we want to focus on and try and highlight that, that history and what happens there. So, that is one of the ones we're going to come up with a concept like, like Work to show that, make sure there's interpretive signage, make sure people understand, you know, what happened there and how it ties back to the history of the town.
And also on the Civil War.
Yes.
And where the troops came in, where they were located during the time that we are supposedly to have made a difference when it came to the Gettysburg Battlefield.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you do focus on those things also?
Yes, we're, we're, well, the one that Andy just described, and then we're also interested in the area around the library where Lincoln spoke. That when we talk about place-making, like that, that monument is kind of obscure, you know? It's not what it should be, and, I mean, just out of a patriotic appreciation, that needs to be more significant, but from an economic development perspective, that's going to bring people into your town if, if this whole area is designed as, as a place where people want to spend their time.
Okay, thank you.
What other questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you. We'll be doing the, doing the draft, and you will see that next. Thank you for your time and your support. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
I get one more. Yep.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move into the consent agenda. Is there a motion of foot?
I have a question.
Oh, question?
What are we, a question about a report. So, what will happen? Do we just wait until we get the next part? People are doing, Margie? Okay.
They're going to give us a draft, copy of the draft report. We can, at that point in time, make some tweaks if we need to.
Okay.
But, then we'll finalize it, finalize it here in a meeting that we are accepting the plan.
And I will make a motion for the consent agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like, I like the tie in there. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? carries consent agenda is approved. Flipping the page over, we'll move into council. Yes.
Do you know who's stuff this is? I just don't want these people leaving it to be theirs. Anybody knows? Because it was here a little while ago when I got here, so.
I don't know, how old is it? It could be mine if it's new.
Is it?
I don't think it's there.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to have.
I'm going to check things out. I just wanted to make sure someone wasn't living and we didn't get here.
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
Probably could have made five bucks, probably.
Well, you know, I bet, I bet you get a thousand from that for chat about two minutes ago.
Okay, let's move into Finance and Personnel. Council Rowland.
Ah, consideration of a motion to rescind the February 22nd bid for waterborne traffic paint from low bidder, One Nation Industry, due to their inability to provide a performance bond and to re-award, I suppose, the bid to the second low bidder, bidder NS-Flint Incorporated.
So, motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What are resources? Counsel Cress.
Consideration of a motion to approve the grant agreement with the P.A. Fish and Boat Commission for a boat launch ramp and expansion of the parking area with a $50,000 cash match for the 2024 budget.
So, motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, consideration of a motion to approve the bid award to the lowest qualified bidder, Bobcat of Adams County, 370 Church Street, Hanover, P.A., for a remote-controlled track slope mower in the amount of $62,950.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel Cress. We'll move into Planning Commission. Counsel Hagberg.
Consideration of a motion approving Resolution Number 1369 for the approval of the preliminary final land development plan for Tractor Supply 2030 Wilson Avenue, Hanover, P.A.
So, motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consideration of a motion approving Resolution 1370 for the approval of the final reverse subdivision and land development plan for 310 Juniper Lane.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counsel Hagberg. Counsel Locker, do we still have you?
Yes, I'm still here. I request consideration of a motion approving ordinance number 2341 for regulating the placement of refuge dumpsters or portable storage units.
So, motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I'll ask Secretary Felix to give us a roll call.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Cress?
Yes.
Mr. Locker?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Locker. Move into Public Works and Facilities. Counsel Cress, back to you.
Consideration of a motion approving the sale of surplus equipment in the amount of $69,082 from the municipal bid, online auction, and authorized by Resolution Number 1367, approved by Hanover Borough Council, April 26, 2023.
So, motion.
Seconded.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
Motion carries. The Enhancement Committee. Mr. Hagberg.
Consideration of a motion to approve a grant submittal through Explore York for 17 to 20 additional downtown storyboards utilizing the Borough of Hanover as grant agent at no cost to the borough.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
Motion carries. Moving to Page Three, we'll keep Counsel Hagberg in the hot seat, but transition to the Library Working Group.
Consideration of a motion that the Borough, Borough undertake the following actions with respect to the library. Adopt the findings and recommendation of the Council Library Working Group as reviewed by the Council's legal, reviewed by Borough Legal Council and Administration, and empower the Borough Manager to effectuate the findings and recommendations of the Council's Library Working Group with respect to the future operations of the library.
Second.
So, motion.
Any final discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
One opposed?
I'm opposed, yes.
Any other opposition? The motion carries. Thank you, Counsel Hagberg. Madam Mayor, we have your report.
Hi, got my report for April. April 4th, Borough Staff, Council Members, and I were given a tour and update of the work nearing completion on the Shepherd Myers Dam located on Impounding Dam Road. This reservoir is an integral part of the water system that provides water for Hanover Borough, Penn Township, Conewago Township, McSherry's Town, and parts of Heidelberg Township. This work was mandated by the D.E.P. for us to continue to use this valuable water source for the entire community. I'm looking forward to the gradual refilling of this reservoir. April 14th, a small group of us had an initial meeting to begin planning for our 250th celebration, which will take place in 2026, and attendance for members from the Daughters of the American Revolution, Hanover Area Historical Society, and Advocate Matthew Jackson. Our group has grown since then. April 15th, I presented a proclamation to Hanover Little League for their 30th anniversary during opening day festivities. Thank you to all the volunteers over the years who have given of their time, talents, and resources over the years so boys and girls can learn the game of baseball, teamwork, perseverance, develop friendships, and have fun. Have a great ball season, Hanover Little Leaguers. April 22nd, Second Class Scout Aiden Capps of Boy Scout Troop 30 attended our Council Workshop Meeting as he is completing his merit badge for citizenship in the community. After the meeting, I had the pleasure of discussing the issues and what he can do to be a good citizen now and in the future. His scout master is the Hanover Borough Police Department's very own Lieutenant Bunny. April 26th, did you know Hanover is a certified tree city, USA? On Arbor Day every year, I present a proclamation to State Forester Matt Kern as part of our recertification process, and the Hanover Garden Club and the Guthrie Memorial Library celebrate with a children's program. The forester did a tree planting demonstration, librarian Ms. Kelly read a story, and Stacy Goulch, with first energy, Med Ed, told us how to safely plant a tree. Every child received a tree sapling to take home with them. Enjoy the beauty of the trees around us through all the seasons. April 27th, Borough Manager Margie Lewis and I attended the YMCA's annual dinner held at the Hanover Country Club. Hanover is fortunate to have an outstanding YMCA and the extensive facilities, classes, and services that they offer to everyone in the community. April 28th, the Hanover Exchange Club's 23rd Annual Night of Comedy and Magic held at the Ike was entertaining and funny for the whole family. I presented a proclamation in honor of this event and National Child Abuse Prevention Month. All the proceeds from this show stay local and go toward prevention of child abuse in the York and Adams Communities. The show was opened by an outstanding performance by the E.H.M.I.S. Show Choir. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitman. I will open us up in the room for the final public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anything else we need to hear? Seeing none, I'll ask for Community Media's assistance to open the online and electronic means of communications.
Our Zoomers can now mute themselves if you'd like to address Counsel.
Seeing none, I will close that public comment portion of the meeting. Call your attention to the important committee meetings and efforts for the month of June, which are printed in the agenda as well as can be found on the website, and request of counsel a motion to adjourn. Good mind reader.
And don't forget the Memorial Day Parade this Monday morning.
Second.
What time?
I think it starts at 8:30.
Good question.
It's, it's like at the young manor, if I remember correctly.
We start lining up there, and then we drive all the way out to Mount Olivet Cemetery, where there's a service out there for our veterans.
All in favor of the adjournment motions?
So moved.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Chris, thank you very much.
Noting the exception of Counsel Cress.